Good evening and welcome to those here in the room and on television to the regular meeting of the planning board of the village of Dobbs Ferry on Thursday evening, February 6, 2020. Tonight we have six items on our agenda. Several of those will, we will be moving over to next week, so I think we have three items to act on. First item, number, item number two, 23 Manor Place, continuation of public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new driveway. I would move that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I think, yeah, I think as, as, we will see tonight, I think the issues that we're going to be discussing are engineering issues that we want to make sure are very clear, clearly documented before we go any further. So I think this is appropriate to have this presentation and then a response from our consulting engineer.
Just a chartered engineer for the project. So this is continuation and since last time, last time I presented the project, there were some minor revisions and including today, I sent everyone my latest revision in response to Mr. Palmer's comments. So I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it. It was kind of the end of the day.
Two hours ago?
Fortunately, Mr. Palmer had a chance to look at it. That's the important thing.
So, so we did receive the responses, but as we were saying earlier, we need time to digest them and look through them and review them. Glad you got a quick turnaround, but maybe you want to walk through some of the changes that were made briefly.
Okay. So let's see. Some concerns were we have a single line going, a lot of existing earth driveway. So these concerns were that this, let's say, storage and stormwater management practice needs to have certain setbacks, so certain nodes and things like that were added. Catch basin, we added catch basin for the additional, let's say, the concern was that this previous payment might get clogged. So let's say if it gets clogged, we added a catch basin so that water and sloping towards catch basin drains and is the site, now all the water will have a, have a chance to actually get into catch basin, into, into the stormwater management practice, not necessarily through the previous payment, but through this additional access through catch basin. So also I wanted to, one, another, you know, I don't know if it was very clear, I think I mentioned on this last time, but I wanted to just clarify that the calculations for stormwater management and, you know, detention, retention were done for the, let's say, for this impervious asphalt area, but, and that's how this school was sized, however, however, taking, not taking into account that this is a previous payment, however, because of, you know, the fact that this is a previous payment, we're really not increasing peak flow rates. So going from earth driveway to previous payment, there is no really increase in stormwater runoff. So in a way, we don't really need a storage, additional storage. So this is a secondary stormwater management practice, just in case it's clogged, taking into account that this driveway, as if it would be just regular asphalt driveway. I guess that would be about it. I mean, we, we were talking about this in general with water drains, existing conditions, with existing conditions, basically, the watershed is pretty much by a side in half of this adjacent lot. So this is the watershed and the fluid direction is towards this side, side, towards east. So the concern was how about this curtain drain? So the watershed that rains towards the curtain drain is, as we can see, this is a ridge, this is a ridge, and this is the watershed, and this is a high point, basically where the crop is and where this driveway on the paper road is. So this is the watershed that rains towards this curtain drain, and it does not include any of the development areas that we did not analyze, and there will be no impact or any additional, additional drainage towards that curtain drain.
Thank you. Are there any comment on George?
There was a few other issues that we were addressed. There's maintenance, we talked about the maintenance, there's some ASTM standards in there. I don't know if you continue, will continue to use them.
Well, so when it comes to the maintenance, so my point was that every single stormwater management system has some sort of maintenance required. So obviously, I don't know, it has in the code, some kind of requirement for like the town always, as it approves stormwater management systems, also approves stormwater maintenance plans, somehow, I don't know, it's up to town, but in this case, it was suggested that there would be a maintenance plan that would include operational maintenance and some, I guess, how to take care of the system, and I don't know what I would ask you to do.
Yes, typically if you have a SWP or a stormwater ma, SWPP is what we call it, then you'd have a formalized plan, you have easements, that's outlined in the code, but this is below the threshold for one acre of disturbance. So it's not typical for this size project, but since you have a special product, which is the forest pavement, that requires a lot of maintenance, because it could clog and as mentioned on the drawings, annually it has to be checked in the spring and the fall.
Oh, yes.
So that cost of that test is like $400 every time, so that's like an $800 expense every year, even going 10 years, for that's $8,000 in the next 10 years. That's a lot of expense for a homeowner, that's pretty onerous for them to go through. So you want to memorialize that, because after the first year, most people go, oh, $800, I'm not doing that anymore, and then it goes to the wayside. So that's why we put in things like maintenance bonds and maintenance requirements.
But also it needs to be taken into consideration that this maintenance, and actually it does explain everywhere in the literature that it's, you know, it's maybe the clogging and the more maintenance required when there is, you know, lots of traffic, you know, if it's more used with, you know, with a commercial facility where, you know, in this case, there will be probably just one park on the in and out, or maybe two and not a lot of traffic. So the way it gets clogged, basically, is just by, you know, like hopefully nobody's going to put sand for the, your, or some other organic material on the, on the previous payment.
Yeah, so clogging could happen by sanding, it could happen by erosion, anything could come down the driveway.
Are there trees, deciduous trees there?
Trees, anything, you know, leaves, everything could clog, it's plug it up. So tires, tires attract dirt from everywhere, so clogging is, is the major problem.
Do, are there, Ed, what about, but this would be like the owner would have to decide if they even wanted to do this, but what about like, you know, really permeable treatments, you know, like open brick, you know, like the grass bricks, like is there, does, does it ever actually have to be paved, like, does it actually have to be asphalt paved, or could it actually be?
It's a one-family house, it could be, could be gravel, it could be anything.
Right, so I'm sort of wondering, because I personally am sympathetic with the idea of trying to do passive stormwater management, I think that's like a best practice, but it sounds like the paving, the permeable paving thing is just a big challenge, and it feels like the goal is to sort of make a sort of natural way to deal with the water. Why not go to a, like a really country road? You know, like why, like why pave it all, like why not put in block pavement, you know, open block kind of paving that you don't have to ever worry about something might actually grow in, maybe not, but you wouldn't actually have to worry about clogging.
With no sewers?
Hmm?
With no sewers?
Well, I don't know, I don't know how that impacts what George, what still would have to be required in terms of a conventional stormwater system.
I did explore the other options. I looked, and from an aesthetic view, a maintenance view, and actually water management, this was probably one of the best options, and it cost me more to do this, it really does.
Right, so I'm sort of wondering at this point, like since you're being required, basically they're putting in a redundant system, right, that's the system that is if this thing completely failed, it would still work. So at a certain point, it's like, well, why didn't?
Well, the, the main reason is if I could have just done it traditional and just put asphalt driveway down and put a giant cul-de-sac in somewhere is the traditional way of doing it, I would have done it. But in this case, we had limitations on when we, when we did the park test. We went down four or five feet, we had a lot of rocky material, so it would have, we would have been taking out boulders and boulders and boulders, and it would have been serious excavation. So instead of doing all that, we went this route, it was just least damaging to the area, and it works. It does work, it requires more maintenance, but it really does work very well, and it's made from natural materials, natural rubbers, recycled materials, and, you know, not using, you know, asphalt and all those different chemicals, it's, it is a linear solution. I did look at the others, the, the block where you grow the grass in between them, and over time, you know, this seemed like the better solution when I looked at the stats on it. That was the reason for my decision, even though it cost me more money. So that, that was the reason.
Thank you.
Well, to that point too, I'm not sure why you're not utilizing the area that was adjacent to it. Why, why aren't you going like, you did a test pit 40 feet away, you had soil down eight, nine feet, why not use that area? Why, why go under the driveway?
I'll tell, well, I'll tell you why. We, we did five park tests, five, and we hit, we hit rock four, five foot down on all of them. You need to go much deeper for a cul-de-sac. We tried. The system would have been, we would have had to put cul-de-sacs throughout the whole yard, it would have been really an insane project. It would have turned, if it was viable, I would have done it. That would have been an easier solution for me, and for you, you would have, you know, it would have been easier for all of us.
Conventional system.
Engineering, everything. If it was a viable option, I would have done it. It wasn't. We dug everywhere, I had the backhoe digging all over the place, couldn't get deep enough. That was the problem. That's why I wrote this solution.
Thank you. So George.
So, well, like we said earlier, we just received these comments, we'd like some time to take a closer look at them. We have them today, so, well, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Continue the public hearing. Was there a new plan that you needed also, or?
I think, was emailed out today, a new plan, new everything, drawing, photos and some other stuff was sent out.
The photos of the. I even sent you photos of, we dug up the entire sewer line, just to see the condition, there was no root intrusion, and it was all pretty, very visible and excellent shape. So, you know, so you'll be able to see it, and then along which is kind of, has the plant thing, it'll be real visible too, you'll see it. Shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. This is a public hearing? Yes, this is a public hearing, if anyone wants to be heard. We've, we've had the benefit of participation at several of the previous meetings, and I appreciate that, but if there's something new that someone would like to say, that would be great too. Emphasis on new.
23 Highland Avenue, above the property to the south. No change in what I had to say last time, which is that my only request is that you would consider in this application adding a clause stating that this driveway cannot be used for access to a second lot. Just one thing I would add, to add is where this concern comes from, and part is right there on the plan, but our concern is that for the benefit of the new village attorneys, Paulson and Flora, who hasn't been here, let your reasons on the board, a few others, this application has been going on for at least about two years, with a proposal, it began with a proposal to subdivide the property and put a, a second lot, second house right here. And if you look at the site plan, all this, I'm listening to all the engineering concerns, and I'm listening to all of that, and listening to the runoff and everything like that, but apparently nobody picked up on the fact that right at the end here, it curves and it heads east, and this is an open end, so it's prime for doing exactly what my concern is. This should be closed off, and we are done. This is curving, and it's just a capital letter at the beginning of the next sentence. And putting a restriction on using this to access a second lot would be consistent with the village vision plan, and would be consistent with the trustees' resolution that went forth when they demapped and discontinued the streets.
Thank you.
So, in answer to that, there is a section in the code that speaks to access strip being used instead of frontage being used over a private driveway across someone else's property, and it says that it can only be used for one, no more than one additional lot. So Mr. Pisa is accessing across that strip onto his, a subdivision would be a third, so two additional lots. So if he were to come back with the idea for a subdivision, he couldn't access through, he couldn't use that as an access strip. He would have to use frontage on a public street.
Right, thank you.
Also, also one other thing I was going to mention is that this, what's being asked from this board is the, the ability to pave the driveway on Mr. Pisa's property and not any portion of the paper street. This board is not authorizing, or is not authorized to allow the use of the paper street in connection with that driveway, so it is effectively, at, at this point, a driveway to nowhere, and it will be such when this board acts. Mr. Pisa will have to get permission from the board of trustees as to the use of that pub, paper street, and possibly the disposition of it, once we determine who's entitled to own it, if the village does not want to own it. So this board can't specifically condition that, you know, the use of the public street, paper street, because they're not approving the use of the paper street. All right, so I just wanted to make that, that clear.
All right, thank you for that. I thought I was clear. My proposed appendix to the, to the resolution speaks to the driveway, it just says the driveway may not be used for access to a second lot. And since it's just a driveway to the one house right now, adding that resolution has, it's neutral, it doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. It just, it's kind of a period at the end of the sentence. New driveway, and just adding the language to the, to the resolution stating that it can't be used for access to a second lot would be consistent with, and not harmful to this application. It, it does no harm, so that's what I have a question.
Does, the, that street is Manor, correct? The one on the top?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a house already at the second lot at Manor? So what you're?
Mr. Pisa's lot is on Manor.
Right, if he subdivided, if he subdivided, there's no access from Manor, long to that.
They would subdivide it as a flag, so it would have 25-foot flag on Manor, but it's very steep, so the engineering to create a driveway in from Manor is difficult.
I see.
Now, if I could, just before you go further, to respond to your question, I thought you meant the, the paper street, and I was also responding to what Ed was saying about the use of an access strip. But I mean, why don't we ask the question, Mr. Pisa, are you willing to agree to a condition that the driveway will only be used for one house?
Well, you would have to make that a uniform decision for the entire village.
No, 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 I'm asking you for your property, because you can agree to anything.
I know what you're asking me, but for me to condition myself, I have other neighbors that adjoining the paper street, so for me to say, hey, you know, who, I'm just one person.
No, no, as Mr. Sudak suggests, the driveway, not the paper street, your driveway.
Well, my, no, I, I mean, for, for, I, I can't predict anything in the future.
Okay.
I would say I would not want any restrictions unless they're going to be imposed on the entire village.
That's fine, I just thought I would give you the opportunity.
No, then I would agree to it. If it's imposed on the whole village, that's fine.
Yes.
Hi, Helene Rothstein, 21 Highland Avenue. My property is to the south of Mr. Pisa's property, of his property. Our concern, those of us who live on Highland Avenue, our concern is, as Steve expressed before and has expressed in multiple other meetings, that this not, that this approval of this driveway not be allowed to open the door to a future submission by Mr. Pisa, to put another house on his property, to subdivide it and put another house there, which would loom over my house and the other houses to the south of his property. What Mr. Manley said is new information for me, that it wouldn't be allowed anyway because it would be a third that.
It wouldn't be allowed to access.
Right.
Through that.
Correct.
Paper street.
Okay. And, and what Steve also said was that, you know, this is requesting this clause is not doing any harm, it is asking Mr. Pisa to, you know, kind of contract with his neighbors in good faith by agreeing that that driveway is not going to be used to access another house on the property. That's all we're asking. Thank you. I'm going to see that, I live at 23 Highland Avenue, our property, but Mr. Pisa's property to the south. Again, I just wanted to reiterate the history of this property so that we can put it into a larger context. A few years ago, when Mr. Pisa obtained the property, he came with two separate proposals to subdivide and put a second house on the property. The first proposal proposed coming in over the demapped Gabriel Street from the Zerm Road. Now, fast forward to the future, here we are. I have no objection to Mr. Pisa paving this driveway, but I think, I speak for all of us, but we see this as the, not just a simple submission for the paving of the driveway. We see this as a first step towards a bigger project and a bigger goal, which clearly Mr. Pisa has shown in the past, just to put another house there. And that would violate the vision plan, it would violate the, this is really a discussion for the village board, I guess, it would violate the intent of demapping the streets because there would be more development in a very, you know, small neighborhood. And so what we're just, the reason why we're asking for that restriction on this driveway is because we feel it will give Mr. Pisa what he wants, which is to pave a driveway and build a new house, and it will protect our neighborhood, because more development is going to have an adverse effect on our neighborhood and on our property values, and we have, we are long-time Dobbs Ferry residents, and we just ask that you consider this when you make your decision. We're just trying to protect what's there. Thank you.
This statement was made a while ago stating that there's no way that Mr. Pisa says he can predict what could happen in the future. I'm here to tell you right now, on the record, that right now, the curve extends down, it turns, it heads east in anticipation of doing exactly what we're talking about, so.
Say that again.
If you look at the heavy double line, the curved line, it runs down, it runs down. If this was a driveway just for this property, it would L over to the west and sweep out, and we'd be done with it. What you have instead is it comes down, it sweeps to the east into the rest of the lot, and then there's a single line where the paving just ends. I only point that out because, I mean, I'm looking at it from 30 feet away first time, but I looked at it when it first came out, and I said, that's the first thing I spotted. So if there's any doubt that there's something coming, there it is, it's right in front of you.
Say, say that again.
It's turning.
Yeah.
Here's the curved line.
Yeah.
Instead of curving to the west and forming an L.
Yeah.
Like a driveway would do, if you were just doing a driveway, this curve comes down, it curves to the east, and then there's a double curve down here, or there's a, there's a curve down here. This is a T intersection, which was drawn right now, just pointing that out, so.
So you think the curb should be moved, is that the deal?
I think that what would be good is add whatever your quest, simply a statement or a clause in your resolution stating that this driveway cannot be used for access to a second lot. That's all. As far as we want.
So the reason why that's not closed off?
So, the reason why that's not closed off, so you want to have a place to turn around as well, so someone coming up the driveway, okay, they want to turn around, they go up, face up the driveway, they turn around, they go down. Also, for snow plowing, if I could, you want to, you want to plow the snow, you want to push it off into that area, and then keep going up the driveway. So, I mean, you could put a curb there, and then, uh, but it would be a flush curb, it would be a very low curb, so you wouldn't put anything up very high. But you could use that, uh, and this is what, uh, Tessa and I were talking about, was that that could be, uh, like a level spreader. So if something did go past it, it wouldn't go over at one point, it would go over evenly over the whole thing. So that was one of the recommendations in the previous letter that we have to review when we look at it closely. So, we've contemplated that, we've looked at it, so we, we are, we are discussing that, so.
And, and I agree with Mr. Palmer, and if someone does pull up the driveway, now it is they can turn around and don't have to go all the way up to my private area up here, I mean, which is like right in my backyard. So they can simply turn around here and go back down. That's the reason for it, not for any, uh, secret design that he likes to claim. And that's all that's, it's in that figure, three days. You know, I'd like to just point out, I've been, you guys have been really good in picking out very reasonably, and I appreciate that. But throughout this project, I actually had a group of neighbors conspire with former officials, and we have all the emails, and they actually put forth an attorney, one of these ambulance chase attorneys, that was a friend of Mr. Sudak, okay, and he came in, cost my neighbor tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees for a made-up argument that somehow, out of, just out of the sky, they owned the paper, the paper street, had an eminent domain, which was the most ludicrous argument ever, and it was thrown out of the Supreme Court on numerous occasions. It was absolutely ridiculous. And they actually went as far and created a fraudulent survey to show they owned your village property, which was thrown out of the Supreme Court. And this is all created by Mr. Sudak and his whole ingenious ideas that he put forth, and it cost my neighbor a small fortune, for nothing. So I appreciate your patience, I just want to let you know that there's other history behind it, and all we're doing is creating a turnaround. And if you're going to pass laws, and the whole village and every paper road has to abide by them, so would I, of course I would. I'm, I'm a citizen like everybody else. But anything that's decided should be for everyone, not just singling out one individual, whether it's me, another person on a paper street, it should apply to everyone. That's all.
Thank you. I think we should move on, and, uh, we will move this...
Continue this to the next...
Continue this to the next, uh, to the next meeting.
Do we have a date for that?
Uh, yeah, I don't.
March fifth?
March.
Is it March fifth?
I don't know.
Do you want to adjourn it to the specific day?
Oh, okay.
March fourth.
Fifth?
Yeah, we could just do a motion that I voted.
Adjourn it to March, meeting on March, March five.
Second?
On favor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to those that came.
It's March five.
Is there someone here for sixty-five Wal Grove?
Yes.
Uh, if it's all right with the applicant...
These two items not being...
If it's all right with the applicant for one fifty-six. Thank you.
He's not here. Too annoying.
I don't know, which is making...
I am specifically from the architect of the project.
Yes.
So, this is a pretty good beginning for an addition project. There's a two-hundred-and-ninety-one square foot addition of a garage on the second story, and a three-hundred-and-eighty-four square foot addition of a apartment consisting of a small corridor at the entry, and a new stomach replacing a street corner. We received comments from the county engineer, which were addressing for the hearing. I believe the only one that was, excuse me, uh, something that was more than a candidations was related to the purpose of which we are addressing now.
Good, good, thank you. Anyone have any comments at this point? Uh, my recommendation would be that we call for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Are there any variances required?
Variance was obtained, but there still is a break in the Sky Planet exposure, so I suggest we, uh, send this along to the AHRB before he even comes back for a recommendation.
Can we do that, Ed, and have a, set a public hearing for March fifth and refer it to the AHRB at the same time, same motion, I guess?
Yeah, alright. I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor? Thank you.
I did it.
I don't think there's any.
Look at it.
Anything on the drawings.
It's really a good application.
I think that was one of them.
Got you, got you, okay.
George, George.
So, so we're now looking at...
No, he's not. That was, no, they, they got beat up by the AHRB.
Okay. This is nice, this is different.
Yes.
Bigger.
It's even bigger.
It's like, it's like three quarters of an inch bigger, taller. So, before you start, tell me this building is, I, I watched, I wasn't here, as you know, for January's meeting, but I watched the video, and every one of the board members said the building should be smaller. Now, tell me that this building is smaller.
Um, actually, when you, when, because I had to look at it, we were, we were thinking about what he calls out, was that the year is too big.
No, they said...
No, I think you actually...
It was bigger, it was too big.
Go back and, and look at it, get the background.
I just watched it yesterday.
The board members said that it just looks like it's too big. That's what it said. I even asked the question, is it a matter of how it looks, is it a matter of the units? The height, because we're, we eliminated all the variance to the needed.
No, I think yes. Eliminated all the variance? You have, you've eliminated the variances?
We, um, to a certain extent, we have eliminated the side yard, front yard.
No, you haven't. So, I, I will send you my new, uh, review, but you have...
Okay, well, I would certainly like to see, we've divided the network side yard on the sides, we've got two seven twenty, actually an eight foot or seven point eight provided with the front. Um, we dropped the height in the back so that we have the two, the height that is required big, and we do need the two variances still for building coverage of the site. And the meeting we had last month, there was a discussion that that was, it was understood that that is going to need to be discussed in some way. So, can I start with the...
Well, I mean, I think the board, if I'm not wrong, still agrees that it's too big, so you should come back with something smaller.
Patty, I'm looking at my notes, and it says, I have the words, "it's too big", written.
I mean, otherwise, you're just wasting our time, you're wasting everybody's time.
Well, we've made significant changes to it, and it would be clear if you walk it through to see. And we're also doing more analysis of the buildings on the street, so we have a better sense of comparison when it enters the...
I don't know, what does the rest of the board think?
Well, I think we'll, we'll let you...
I think it's too big, I think it's, it's a nice change.
Yeah, I think we should let it go.
Yeah, a brief, a brief, a brief run-through.
There you go.
Last night's dinner, Dr. Design, presented the board's property. Um, at the last meeting, to show them where it is, um, last meeting, we had this sheet where we talked about what the coverages are in other plots on the street. We changed the plan and the elevation, so it means, uh, what we have changed the plan to. Um, actually, this sheet is pretty good for showing, one of the major differences was, before, we had the building here on the street set back five feet. Um, we've set back one section to eight, this section sets back another feet, and this section sets back a period. So we're now twenty-four feet from the property line to the entrance of the garage, and we have an articulated mill that specifically is intended to help bring the scale of things down, and I'll show how that works. Um, this is just the numbers that we had on that sheet, which shows that, you know, there, there, this really is a neighborhood that needs to get a better calibration of what its site coverage is. It says stuff, and of course, we showed this, which showed, this was the model that we used for MDR two, this is what's currently permitted in the MDR two, which would mean that none of the properties on the street would be blocked. So I think it's still worth, we're trying to figure out what the best answer to that is. These are the drawings that we received, which show, um, the eight parking spaces in the base, with the driveway coming out of the side. One of the advantages of us dropping that back to twenty-four feet is that people would be able to pull out of the driveway, grab the garage, and report it back to the sidewalk. And it would be fully out of the garage, which I think is a improvement of safety. Um, the entrance on this side comes into the entrance hall, staircase, elevator, garden area that's on the front. Uh, we've got a landscape architect who's working on that, developed this in a way, you know, it's obviously private for this building, but it's right on the sidewalk, so it would be something that I think would be an amenity for the neighborhood. Um, you don't really need to go through the plans, because we have not laid out the visual plans, other than we're still talking the four singles and four two-bedroom, um, units. And I've got quarters here with these, this is the utilization, um, the calculations for the lower level. Um, and this is how we've changed the, uh, the submission from before. What we've done is we've created an EVE at this height of the building, and this slips back at twelve and twelve inch, so it actually comes back fairly quickly. Uh, we've got two dormers to give windows to those two top units. Um, this center mass is very much in scale with other buildings on the street. We did try the idea that was discussed at the meeting of what happens if we have two buildings side by side. Look like they're side by side, but still be one building, and it just always looked like we were trying to create a faux building with that. So what we prefer is the center concept, where this mass is something that is very calm, stable, and with this roof coming down with, and then two elements flanking it, one that projects forward, the other that drops back significantly. Um, actually, just to quicken on those, that explains how it would work. And just noting here, this is the existing grade on the side of the house, this is the existing grade in the back of the house. So one of the misperceptions, I think, earlier was that we were building this structure on top of the site and then putting the building on top. What we're actually doing is excavating into the site with where the basement would be to create the parking that's needed with the building, where the comments by neighbor at the last meeting was, again, the concern that we provide as many parking spaces as is practical. Um, you've worked it hard to fit eight in, the eight actually has two parts of that that are, that extend out from the volume of this, but are fully below grade. So it's not something that you can sit. Um, this is the back of the subject property, showing how this kind of steps up, coming to the back. Um, this is, it is you've come around to the backyard. By the time you're standing here, you're really at the second floor level, in that effect. To build the building that we proposed, we're having to excavate down to the first floor level, and in the back, we only have two stories. The story of the first floor compartments, the story of the second floor compartments, and we've held the third floor back so that the surrounding buildings, um, would not have something that really, you know, is tall next to them. It's not, it's not as tall as they are. Um, some more shots of that. Uh, at this point, I'm over on the side to the house to the north, um, and then, well, you can see how the retaining walls work throughout the neighborhood. This is looking back, facing south. This is the building to the south of the building, um, the building they have in the backyard, and you can see how old the yard in this, on this side of the street, dropped down quickly. So by the time your two buildings over, the grade is down in the entire story. So we're, our garage would be below this ground level, that would be actually above the garage. Um, this is in the front, where we have the retaining walls that are existing, that are referred to before, and this would all be eliminated. This would not be coming out to the sidewalk. We, originally, were keeping that. So our idea was to open this all up, and we actually pulled the front of the building on the right-hand side back such that it would line up with the neighboring building. So when you look at the front of the building to the south in this building, they would be in the same length, or relatively in the same length. Um, let's say, I don't know why we built this, but it shows how that wall comes across. Um, this is the building to the north. Uh, we measured that from this elevation to the EVE, it's thirty-one feet. On this side, it's thirty-one feet, um, from the, uh, base of the porch to the EVE, agreed, this is an EVE that's coming down, but when you look at this front, it really does feel like those are three floors above the porch. And this is thirty-one feet wide, yeah, thirty-three feet is the EVE, thirty-one feet wide on a forty-foot lot. And when you go down the street, you realize this is thirty-two feet on a forty-foot lot, thirty-two point five on a forty, twenty-eight point six on a forty, forty feet on a forty, thirty-four feet on a forty, and then we come to where we're dealing with fifty-six feet on a seventy-six foot wide lot. The challenge in this project is obviously, this is a bigger lot than the other parcels, and we're trying to do something that fits with that and that makes sense.
Well, you're bigger on width, you're not, I don't know what...
Well, we're, we're, here's our, the grade that we're starting with on the site is effectively probably, it averages about eight feet above the sidewalk. That's the grade around that existing house. So none of the other houses have it, they're all basically flat with the sidewalk. So we're, we're starting on something that's higher, we're trying to make it look like it's got a base built in the ground, two stories in the middle with the roof coming to the EVE. The two, these are porches, they're not solid volumes. They, this sets back, so these windows are basically, um, six inches behind this plane here. This is eight feet back from this. So when you see this, it's actually setting back fairly significantly, and that is the extent of the presentation.
Hey Patty, um, as part of the massing question, I mean, I see that you're asking for a hundred percent area variance, which directly goes back to the massing of the building. I mean, that's not two percent or five percent, that's a hundred percent area variance.
We're looking for being below the fifty-four percent. Now, that also includes the footprint that's below grade. So if we actually limited it to what was actually, if you were sitting on the ground, we're, we're about eight percent less than that, but it's still significant.
Uh, you know, I think that directly reflects the out-of-scale-to-the-neighborhood issue.
Was there any, I mean, this, this sort of stepping back all the way, was there any effort in looking to reuse the existing building that's a hundred and forty years old?
No, the condition of the building is such that it really doesn't make sense for what the value of this property is, given what this only means it's used to be.
I think, just, just really to the board, I think it would be useful, at least for me, to do a site visit, even, even at this premature time. I think we can look at these all day, but until we actually go out there.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Sure.
Okay.
That's your pleasure.
Yeah, our pleasure. How's everybody's weekend?
Um, gone until Sunday afternoon, evening.
Yeah, I don't think we can do it this weekend.
Probably should be later.
It has to be known.
We actually have to notice it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So next weekend?
Want to try to do it on the fifteenth or sixteenth?
Probably not, I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
One, yeah. Okay, well, whatever.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
I'll take a fact you.
Saturday, Sunday?
Either side with me.
Saturday, the fifteenth?
I can't do Saturdays, I have a store to run.
So, sixteen?
What, Saturday's bad?
Yeah, she's still running.
I, I, I have a store to run on Sundays.
Sunday morning.
Bring the animals in.
Sundays would be, I could probably swing a Sunday better than a Saturday.
Okay, Sunday's sixteen?
Yeah. Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock on Sunday the sixteenth?
Ten o'clock, the sixteenth.
Sixteen on a Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and you mentioned that I get noticed.
In the interest of, in the interest of, I don't want to, I guess we're sort of wrapping this up. I mean, now for this evening, I don't know. But I just want to offer one, kind of one thought anyway, because I do think it's still, I mean, it's better in some ways, but I think probably it's still, still looks out of scale. And I think probably you should, if you would, it seemed like it'd be pretty easy to be drawing a new elevation onto your long elevation of those, which is really, huh? But it's not in the set.
Oh, it's not?
The old, the old, the current one that I have, this guy shows still the yet last proposal, right?
Yeah, no, the old building's other.
We don't have your new.
But it's the same, Rob, it's the same size.
I don't think, I guess I missed it. To see that on the whole length.
It's the same size.
No, it's not. It's, it is different. No, it's smaller in some ways. It's lower and smaller.
It's not lower. It's three-quarters of an inch higher.
And, okay, well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, but we do that, but I, I'll tell you one of the, I still think it's sort of, you know, I think the reaction of the board is still big. The one thing that I think is, that I think is a problem is that the ground floor still reads like a fairly impermeable sort of giant that the rest of the house is sitting on, which is not characteristic, you know, most of the houses, I'm looking at the other facades here, and they all have, they tend to have these porches where you go up maybe a half or three-quarters of a story to get to the entry. And I guess what I'm wondering is in your, in the current garage level plan, you have behind that wall where those little square windows are, you have the trash and utility rooms. It's essentially impermeable. It's not, and so I guess what I'm wondering is, is there a way by either excavating a little further in or something like that, that the unit, the entrance to the first floor unit could essentially be at that, you know, similar to the other houses, you know, six or eight feet above grade. And maybe, and the units and sections, right, could actually be a sort of an L, right? It could be, it could be, kind of those ground floor units could be essentially one and a half stories with one with at least a half a story.
So we wouldn't be having to drop this, we'd be just bringing this line down?
Well, I don't know. I think it probably might, I think probably you should think about bringing the whole building down, but what I'm trying to do is figure out how to make the ground level feel less like a more or less impermeable plinth and more like a thing you walk up to to get to some actual.
Like with a porch.
Like a porch kind of thing, which should be characteristic of the other.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly take a look at that. I mean, we've got, right now, we're going up a little bit to get in the garage. So if this was not doing that and this was sinking down, maybe that would work. One thing we have done is we've tried to keep this so someone in a wheelchair, ADA compliant, comes correctly in, they can go right to the elevator. All of the units will be ADA compliant.
No, I agree it makes, it does, you have to do, right, I'm not going to figure it out. And I agree that there's an issue there, but I just think if the first, if there could be, so more or less the line of what is the bottom of your little square windows.
Yeah.
That could be like where the first actual floor is with rooms behind it and so on. I think that might go a ways towards making the thing feel like it's on this kind of not very friendly plinth, even though.
Would it be comfortable if that was working, that the entrance didn't go down?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know how to solve it and I don't want, we can't solve it like this, but I'm just saying it's still, the problem I'm raising is it still looks like three stories sitting on a basically an opaque and not particularly pedestrian friendly plinth. And so I'm trying to figure out a way, you know, suggesting it among the other issues that you have to address, and this isn't the only one, that that, you figure out a way to make it feel like that first active floor, like the other houses on the block is, you know, still not so elevated that it doesn't feel like that it dresses the street.
Sure. One thing, just a quick question on that, is that meant that we had to drop the art down more and have the retaining walls to the back to make that work? Is there a negative on that?
Again, I don't know. You know, all these things, I don't know how it works.
I think it'd be easier to see when you're standing there.
Sure. That's a good idea.
Also, I think as you've done in the past, I think that because of the in-out thing you're talking about, which you do not read in the draw, in the straight-up, I think if you could do your 3D modeling trick, that would be great because I think it doesn't, not right now, when I first looked at it, I thought it was, you know.
It'd be easier.
As you look at it, right, you can't see what you're trying to do with the massing.
Yeah.
But one other thing, Patty, do you, the zoning board application you've got to do that's on, you've heard from the planning board here that the size, bulk of the building, massing of the building is an issue. And we'd like actually to have that held off. If you would do it or if we sent a letter to the zoning board asking them to wait a bit while we tried to tangle with the mass.
We have act, we asked for an agreement on that and we have to give them another letter for this coming meeting, but our intent is to, in the agreement with the zoning board, was we would not come back to them until we had correction for the planning board.
I was going to say, I don't know how they would act on, you know, they would be looking for us to.
Well, they don't have a drawing yet.
They, they submitted all, we, not this, but they, we submitted all the original drawings to them when we, when we got it in. The, you know, it's different, every village likes to do it a little bit differently. In Irvington, we can't get to the zoning board until the planning board feels comfortable in being ready to approve something in the areas of variance, which there's a lot of air to that. There's also a lot of attorneys at question whether that's a fair interpretation of the state law. I do whatever they want, I do whatever you want. So I have no problem that we would not be going back to the zoning board until such time as we have a direction from this board. And we'll, we'll send a letter to that back to let them know for the February meeting and then get, you know, I don't, we'll see after the sidewalk and march.
Yeah, thank you.
So you, could you copy the chairman's words?
Yeah, good.
I can copy everyone. It won't be more than ten minutes.
Yeah. Okay, is anybody else, I think you've, I think you've heard and I think.
I just have a question. What is the, what is that connection in the center there?
This, that's a slight recess that comes back in so that you feel that this form, the way this sits back six inches, this sits back six inches and the copper box for the gutter sits in that. So that comes down and it, so what happens is it kind of, it's a very real, it's not like a painted stripe, but it's enough.
I figured it had some function. I was just curious, because it really is a focal point for me, so that's why I'm asking.
I, I was thinking, I mean, this, this threw out of what we were trying to see if we could make this look like two buildings. And it did look good to break this the way that you guys had talked about it, but the thing that didn't make sense to me was trying to make, well, this one's flapper and this one's braver or something. It just felt like it wasn't a sincere building. I do realize that fifty-six feet is wider than the three-foot buildings that are on the street. But this scale, I mean, there's a little bit of a flaw at the last meeting when I said this mass in the middle is smaller than the house next door. And I think Mr. Hunter said maybe four of them, but this actually, it is twenty-eight point five feet, the house next door is thirty-one feet. So the idea of having elements that feel like they are not wider than what you see on the street.
We should, we should just get rid of those two end pieces, then it would be the same size as one of the other buildings on the street.
But then, you know, you buy a seventy-six foot wide lot with a certain expectation that you'd be able to use that in a way that's.
Yeah, yeah, but the neighborhood has different, and the, and the boards have different expectations. They expect it to look good and fit in with the neighborhood.
Yeah, actually responsible, got to follow the neighbors on this, which is possible.
Well, it's a very hard, a very unusual neighborhood in terms of the arc, size of the buildings and the architecture.
And the opinions of people in the neighborhood, things inform that. So far though, we haven't had a problem anyone shown this too in terms of the aesthetics of it, of it. The concern still, it makes no sense to me, given what's across the street, is we are supposed to have eleven or twelve parking spaces and we only have eight. And of course, the reason one neighbor got very energetic about this was they have no parking. So me coming and creating a need for spaces would be somewhere up, maybe using the street, when they have no place to park. But that's not the way it's supposed to actually work. Everyone's entitled to using the street. We're trying most that we can to give as much parking as possible in sight.
Well, not really. I mean.
How would you put more parking on the site?
Well, you would, you would have a, the number of required units for the number of required parking. I mean, that's what the, what the code is. I mean.
The code says eight units.
Yeah, the code actually, eight, okay, eight units? Oh, yeah, in terms of the number of units, it's what, what Steve's saying is.
It's, you got the.
If we have the parking determining how many units you have, then we would need one unit for each apartment. Right now, that's eight.
Plus we need the bottom of the garage, like if each has not, and maybe the building on top's smaller. And, I mean, there's no way around the first level being underground.
No, what Steve's saying is that you would not have eight units. You would have six units. You'd have six parking spaces for the units. You'd have six units with maybe three ones and three twos, which somewhere comes out around eight. So you'd have eight parking spaces to support the number of residential units.
Because that's what the code is. So, I mean, you could, that's an option. You could actually meet the code, you know, it's a, something that you could do.
What, what happens if that doesn't make the buildings smaller? I mean, the eight, eight parking spaces is eight.
Well, then we'll say it's still too big.
I mean, is, when you talk to.
No, I mean, what I'm trying to avoid is, you know, when you were working on a, on the, on the Oceana building, it just became this war of attrition. It went on for how many years or something and, you know, it's.
The entire process was less than two years.
It was, okay, but it was, you know, it was putting a, a six-story building into an MDR two zone and, and it's, you just had to keep grinding and grinding. And if you want to make this go faster, if you want to, you know, shortcut this process, just make the building smaller.
With the risk that Rob will say, don't go into that, don't want to think about that again. That's actually not what happened. This board unanimously recommended the design, as did, the same design unanimously recommended by the architecture historical viewpoint.
Oh, yeah, but the.
That is not what was built.
Yeah, but the Board of Trustees did not. I mean, it, there's.
Right, in my opinion, and just as a citizen, they failed. They, I don't see how they can put their.
If you're getting pushback with this board, you're bound to get it with the Board of Trustees.
This doesn't go.
Actually, the BOT doesn't.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thankfully.
And, and one of the comments at the last meeting was we acknowledging that our way out of action is doing something that's more animated was the reactions we've gotten from the Board of Trustees on this project were any, you know, if you look one hundred now, I mean, it might be it's awful. You know, it's just, it's a box. And, and we've been pushed to make it as tight and as unarticulated as we possibly can. So when we started with this, we were thinking, okay, we need to be very plain or very, you know, no, no things happening on it. And of course, this board pointed out in the last meeting, you guys are it. If you guys like it, it's approved. If you don't, it's not. Not going to the board.
Well, actually, isn't the Architecture Board the.
Yeah, well, yeah, the AHRB, you know, and that's one actually, which is a great thing. One of the things we've talked about is having a joint session. I've discussed it with the AHRB, they would very much like to do that.
That, I'd like that too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will you guys be willing to come to their meeting or do you want them to come to your meeting?
It doesn't matter, but I think it would have to be, I don't think we're at a place where this is close enough to what the outcome, a productive outcome of that training meeting at, right? I mean, we should get clo, we should get into something we think is.
Find one that we like.
Ballpark.
If you find one that you like and then sell it to the AHRB, okay. I was kind of thinking maybe.
On these in terms of scale, overall massing and scale, and then.
Well, let me ask a question because when, when Steve started initially, I think his reaction was to the width, not the width.
No, no, the height, it's higher than the last building, a little bit higher than the last building.
Because we went to steeper roofs and dropped the Eevee down.
Yeah, but it's higher.
Why, what was it? We learned.
Yeah, but it's still, I mean, you know, after watching the, the board meeting on, on the Dobbs Harry TV and everybody said it's too big and this, you know, maybe it's a little narrower, but it's, it's still too big.
It's more that the mass.
Yeah, the massing.
The massing is a little different.
The massing is.
If you like looking at Wilson's Opera House and saying it looks like the proposed rectangle or box on top, it's huge, but the carved away of the forms makes a lot of difference. And that's what happens here. And I think Rob's comment is.
Can't see it.
When you can't see it from a whole shot. So seeing this in a 3D, I mean, I don't know whether sketchup is the best for carved or models.
I think, you know, the, for me, for me, the eye level view from the street is, is pretty much, you know, so if you can prove that it's, it disappears.
This, that's where this shows up best because if I'm standing on the street, the only thing I notice is this form sticking out. Because this sits back sixteen feet from the property line, not from the street. So it's, when you're looking up the street, you don't actually see the building. In fact, if I could just make one quick observation, this is the same width as this. What happens with perspective is.
Sure.
So things stepping back and eroding back makes a big difference in its perceived mass.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you want to step back the top two floors or top floor of the building, you know, a lot farther?
Well, we, we, we did step that back, the, you know, the, this, this goes way back. So this is the Eevee.
That's actually a sloped roof.
So this is sloping back and it's, it's, it's not a man's heart, it's actually something back at the twelve and twelve pitch. The, you know, maybe what has to go, I mean, you know, this is a covered porch on this side, this is not, you know, if this disappears and that sinks back, that might, you know, it carries this line across as what that porch level is. You know, that, that might be something else that brings this down. I mean, this isn't a great one to see it, but when you look at this relative to the other houses, I think it's, yeah, if they're, I mean, if this isn't there, you know, you're, we're kind of hitting that step as you come down the street.
So Patty, one of the problems that I have is the way you're measuring the height. So what you have essentially is a flat roof.
Right.
With a, a gabled parapet, a gabled looking parapet.
Well, a gabled roof around the perimeter that then.
Parapet. So what, what the code says is you can measure to the midpoint of a peaked roof. That's not a peaked roof because peaked roof would continue up to a peak. So then your midpoint is way up here. When you cut it off down here and make it a faux parapet around a flat roof.
It's not faux.
It's, it's not peaked.
It's a, this ridge runs across, this roof comes down here.
That one does, the other one doesn't. The other one is just hiding the flat roof.
Well, okay, I do think that's something that we could do. Here's what you're really seeing. So these are fully gabled all the way around the building. And what's happened is we've kept this height down by not having this go up further. And that gives us a flat roof in the middle. You know, I, I.
But, but you know what I'm saying? It's like if you start the other side of the roof, you know, somewhere a third of the way in the building, then you get a peak that's way down here. But if, if you start from both ends on a traditionally peaked roof, you're going way up here in the middle. Your ridge line would be in the middle and there's the midpoint is a whole lot higher.
If we did that, it would be a whole lot higher. That's why we didn't do that.
Right, so that's why it's asking for a peaked roof. Measure halfway to a peaked roof or to a flat roof plus three foot of parapet. What is this roof around the flat roof, how high is that?
So explain it to me of how it works, you know, when we're not wasting the board's time, just.
Oh, we're not wasting the board's time. So.
Yeah, we're loving this.
No, we, we, we need a rabbi, not a.
Yeah.
This is getting telmodic.
From that peak down to the flat roof. Height to the flat roof and the, and the distance from the flat roof to your peaks. And then also give. And then also give me the, the math chart for, you're using, that's what I'm doing, a setback, you're going to, to Pre Valley, I don't see a chart.
Pre Valley for the funny, I don't know.
Yeah, give me the chart for the, I don't see that.
Okay.
And then there's another question as to side yard setbacks, whereas you've, you've set back the building above grade, you say, but you're still building the basement into the setback.
Which we have to build something there anyway to control the site because of the height difference with the yard. There's an existing retaining wall there that we would be effectively replacing. Yeah, I mean, there are municipality, I don't think that has a specific code statement on that, but there are many municipalities that if you've got footings or anything else that's below grade, you're not including that in your setback. This does have volume, but it's fully below grade.
Hey, footing, footings almost always go into the, if you're building on the property, the setback line, your footing always goes over, you know, four feet down, whatever, but this is a whole structure.
Again, fully concealed. I don't know if there, I mean, something takes some thought, yeah?
The other, the only other thing, the other thing I would consider, go back to the main elevation, and I realize this comment has to be, there's an asterisk next to it because I'm not seeing the, the setback of the two history pieces, but I think the fact that, at least in this elevation view, it's symmetrical, makes it more imposing, it creates a building that looks more imposing than if somehow it was masked as like two buildings that had been somehow smashed together that had different, that had, you know what I'm saying? It looks imposing because it's the symmetry. You realize it's not quite symmetrical because one side's coming forward and one's going back?
But if you're standing across the street on a day that's not, that's kind of gray, does one, does what you're saying change if this doesn't have this roof?
I don't know.
I think, I mean, I just, I'm just looking at the two structures on either side, and they both have one, a rhythm, and I don't see that following through, so they, there's like a center, and then it builds this way, and yours is like, I think what Rob's saying is two, two pieces here, so it's kind of, it's not fitting in, in my opinion, into the, the rhythm of the other houses, you know what I'm saying? So, there's a middle, and then it breaks off, yours is two, two opposite of what's going on on either side.
Right, this is the one that unfortunately has that middle, it breaks off.
Well, that one does, too, with the windows.
Otherwise, on the street.
No, on the left, that, that structure right there, that house has a middle.
But that house has like a main volume and then other things accreted onto it, which works.
Right. I'm sorry?
This is not on the same plane as this.
I'm not talking about plane, I'm talking about just the rhythm of the facade of the buildings. I mean, maybe that's not what I'm supposed to be commenting on, but...
No, massing is what we were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think that, you know, that would help with the massing, because right now, I think what Rob's saying is just two anchors and then a piece in the middle.
I mean, the piece in the middle is intention.
No, I know, I get it, I get it.
Try to, try to do that anchor.
No, I get it.
Maybe this needs to be more different than this, it already is, because it's a bird, but, I mean, it's, what we've done is every apartment on this side has a word space of bird.
I like the two sides to be equal.
And the, the staircase elevator shaft penthouse drawn as just a line, kind of disappears in the sky there as a line, but it's not going to.
You won't see it.
Not going to see it, it's right on your, your north elevation, right?
At the back of the building.
It doesn't set back in on the roof at all, right?
Especially...
No, but it's, it's at the back corner of the building.
It's special invisible paint.
Yeah, I think, I think you're going to see it. From a lot of different angles.
You will have a hard time seeing it.
How far back is it from the side?
The penthouse is not included in the height, so, but this one is usually set in.
Well, usually, your arrangement, if we weren't thinking parking, we have an entrance all properly closer to the middle of the building. In fact, we had a design, I think, two meetings ago that had that, but that was when we had the driveway coming up the side, which was, you know, I, we did the driveway because that was a comment that we were going to make that worked, but that was something that the neighbors really...
We'll see on the sixteenth.
The idea of the car, of the owner of the house, two other people who live in the house, they were not enthused by the idea that this would be a driveway coming in deep on this side past the windows. Now, that's one of the reasons we kept this, so it doesn't go back further than the front of this house.
All right, let's go look at the, the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And continue the press submission.
Yeah, mine's, then we don't have to talk...
You have to take a motion, I don't know.
No, I don't think so.
Nothing, nobody else is here to present?
I don't know. My move, will you turn?
Second?
Thank you.